All right, it's 6:30. We'll go ahead and call the town council meeting to work. Get the claims for us to start with, maybe.
Yeah, a lot of towns have those on there. Lots of those on there.
Do they pay quite a bit for that?
Yeah, they're really expensive. So in the smaller towns, it's kind of costly particularly.
If you guys ever do want to publish your ordinances online, I know a website that hosts them. Can we talk to some people? I haven't even had them.
He got these two bills that I forgot about. I was like, "Mom." The one is up here, since. And the other one is up here at the corner.
What is the amp you just...
That's my support for my meter reading.
Gotcha.
The online part.
The old meter heads that are over there, are they to be trashed? I know the brass part can be reconditioned out, but I don't know about the meter head that does the reading. There's a box, maybe two boxes of them over there.
Those may be the ones Jason's been replacing here lately, because we've had quite a few going out.
Yeah, I just don't know, are we supposed to dump them, or...
We can send them and see if there's any warranty left on them, just to make sure.
Okay, so the warranty's on the head, the reading part?
Yeah. I didn't realize he'd had that many, but now anybody has, he's left out quite a few.
Yeah, I bet there's 20 or...
I haven't worked on that together, and I can have them come and...
They're in a couple boxes there. And the large U-Macville, what was it?
Pearson's up there, the leak that we had. And the small one was the corner right here, replacing the meter and...
Okay.
Who's lying?
It's right there. I was trying to think, "What's Haley's lots?" And then I seen it's at the park, because I was like, "Oh yeah, I remember we were getting..."
Yeah, we had to call back. And the second one was more than the first one.
Well, because we did two doors.
Oh, we did two doors.
Yeah, we did twice as much.
Open the room, do that next. Get that out of the way.
You say we had a leak down the north end? U-Mac?
Yeah, we did, on our side, down by Pearson's. This has been, what, a couple months ago?
Okay.
Three months ago, how long has it been?
Maybe longer than that.
Yeah, starting the road and...
I'm thinking we are in good shape, we had everything caught up.
I did too.
Well, I think it was on, like, maybe May when it happened.
Yeah, and he said he forgot it, because I talked to him, I said, "Supervisor Ian about it," and he said, "Yeah, I forgot about him too."
That's it, yeah.
And the other one was up here at the corner, that replaced the meter. I haven't heard from him to see which sentence is on us or on him. I said, "He's been in here for two days, one more, have you seen him?"
Seen him.
U-Mac.
They fixed that hole up there on the north end, that sinkhole.
Oh, they didn't, no, they're supposed to be down here at Sins', which...
Oh, I don't know.
And he did an 811 on it.
Okay.
I haven't seen it, I have to text him.
I talked to him this evening about confirming that there, and then the wellhouse, I'm not sure about that.
Catch yourself on the news, Nick?
Did I?
Had the close-up, wasn't it?
I didn't watch, I don't watch news.
Finally made a good effort.
I watched, but I didn't have a chance.
Right, right on your face. No problem with it or anything?
Yeah.
Pretty close, close-up.
Hopefully I didn't curse or pick my nose in.
No.
Did they just cut into the...
I did talk to Ronnie. That hole up there in front of 180 North Main that you reported, it was a tile, and so they fixed it. And that tile has a clear run all the way to the north, down from Tyler's Drive there. So it had collapsed there, so they fixed it. I did ask him about looking at that wellhouse, and he said he forgot to do that.
Well, he's got to look at the tile too.
So he said he would get to it and just reemphasize what we were looking for on that. And I didn't know anything about the Sins' property that you said they're supposed to look at, or...
There's a leak there, but we don't know.
On their side, or...
We don't know, that's why Ronnie's coming to look at it. I talked to him a couple weeks ago.
Okay.
And then I started the 811, and so I got her back, her niece was letting me know.
I did talk to Rick Patton, maybe the next day after our meeting, and he said, "I just clearly forgot to mow that." He said, "The guy next door that had lived there in those two portable houses had thrown all his junk and stuff before there." He said, "I couldn't mow it at the time, well, and since they moved out." So that day, he came to town, mowed it, and he called me and let me know he'd already taken care of it. So that should be in good shape now. I have a question for Tom. Any updates on this survey, lead survey, where we're at?
Still, I mean, people are getting some training on it. And there's a template out there of what they would like us to fill in.
Okay.
But like I say, it's not actually due for years, so not a whole lot of movement on it.
I did inquire with Wessler to see if they were doing that kind of work, and they are, they're doing it for municipalities. But I don't know how much work and labor and time, if we can do this in-house, or if we even should do it in-house, is my question. That's why I was leaning on your expertise.
And it's whatever you guys decide to do, I mean, a lot of it is just going to be filling out that spreadsheet with addresses, and the hard thing is going to be actually each individual connection, looking at how much, as in, there's something, if a house was built after, I think, 87, that's when they had actually, the government had said, "No more lead to be used," so anything like that, you could just say, "Put that off on the books that they were done." But other than that, some way to test each one, or if somebody, you know, has some practical experience as in what kind of pipe was yours.
I asked a question, you know, "How are we going to get to the bottom of each home as far as the problem?" And Wessler told me that every house will have a test. You'll test for lead at their tap, and that will tell you whether you've got a problem. It won't tell you exactly where it's at, but it'll tell you whether or not there is a lead issue. Is that consistent to what you've heard?
Yeah, well, yeah. And the issue is, who's going to do that testing? I mean, you're going to let the homeowner grab a sample and do it, or...
And then who's going to pay for the testing?
Getting ready to ask if any funding came with this mandate.
Not yet.
All the other towns are trying to figure out how to do this too, so you guys might want to coordinate with them.
Well, as I said, the engineering companies are now stepping forward to develop and use the paperwork that's there. And it might be something we want to look at and see what the cost is for that. But the cost of the testing is what worries me. What does a normal lead test cost, your water test, do you remember? What they charge you? You can ballpark it.
Because I just did those this summer, so what were those? Oh, pays. That's $370 just for, well, that was a lead copper though, was it?
That was, what, five samples?
That was the, no, that wasn't lead, we didn't do lead copper this year.
That's right.
So it was more expensive?
So yeah, I think those were like $500 or $600 just for five samples.
Now, there is some training being offered, I think, this week or next, that's free.
There, one was all day, that was tomorrow, but then there's one later on that was that two or three hour one that I was looking at doing.
If anybody on board was making, I mean, it's being funded by the Indiana Finance Authority. I mean, they're paying for it, so it's out there.
I don't think it had a lot to do with the paperwork aspect of it, what I gathered.
Yeah.
And the templates and things, because we did sign up for them, for the small towns, we got that done.
So it is true, if you test and you can't confirm the lack of lead, then you are a so-called positive test, and you have to act upon that.
Now, they keep saying there's going to be plenty of money out there to do all this, but the more I, the... I read recently is like, they don't really have any idea how much is out there that they're going to have to redo. So it's like, right now, it's just the first step, and they're trying to find out how prevalent it is in a lot of these towns, that they're, you know, because they're going to have to change the pipe.
I don't know how you tackle it in the city of Indianapolis or Chicago. I have no clue.
I saw a story last time about Chicago, they say 40 years they wouldn't have it then.
They're spending $8 billion, is what I just saw.
Really?
In a brief search, is what Chicago's spending on 400,000 different taps.
Yeah, it's...
And then is it up to us to pay the bill, or is this customer, if it's in their house? How do you make them...
Have any municipalities challenged this in court?
I don't know.
Because we are responsible to the meter.
I don't know.
So I mean, and that was the other thing they were talking about too, was that...
Well, you don't know which side of the meter the lead could be on.
Right.
If you're testing in the house, that's the other.
There's a lot of unknowns that's still popping up in...
My big concern was the financing of it, you know?
Yeah.
If we're paying for each and every test, that's going to be...
155, well, about 155, 160.
I'm going to at least pursue it, or we can pursue it with another company, I don't care, to at least ask what they're doing in other communities and see what kind of cost we might incur.
Has Rockville even started anything yet? I think everybody just doesn't know what to do.
They're in the same boat you are, they were having the same discussion you guys are having.
As is Rose Dale and Honza.
Well, I don't want to be, you know, at the nth hour and then trying to get in with everybody else's.
Have they even released the final guidance, or whatever you call it?
I'm trying to find it now.
It's very sketchy, I mean, they put this template out that has, what, 30 rows of information, and you have to fill out five rows, I mean, that's the basics, the name, address, location, and then the big question is, is there contaminant or not, is there lead? And a lot of other things that you can fill in to kind of answer that question, but still a lot of unknowns.
And the other thing, if the homeowner doesn't allow you to test water on their tap, then it's an unknown, so it would be assumed that they have lead until we can prove otherwise.
Well, and the lead test is kind of a strange animal too, because you have to let your water sit for five hours before you get a sample. And as soon as you turn the tap on, you gotta grab that sample. So it's not a, you know, walk one up to it, turn it on, and didn't grab it.
Okay, well, I guess it's somewhat comforting that everyone else is having the same conversation, but...
I don't think anyone should touch it till some funding comes with it.
It's a county-wide, I don't know how anybody really's got that kind of money.
Yeah.
And then, like you said, who's, once you test and you find out, who's going to be responsible? Because now you're just open to nobody.
The governor, they don't care.
You guys can start spending your money on these tests, and then some funding come through, but restrictions on it, it can only be spent on this.
Well, what are we at, a year from now?
Yeah, October 24th, I think, is the date it's due.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose they'll delay that, but they can do whatever they want.
It's up to be part of the Alliance of Rural Water, that they've got some funding to help us, but there's still no funding to actually do the testing or the actual labor.
If anyone in part kind of gets something moving forward, all that you guys...
Okay, thank you, thank you. Not really under old business, except we did repair, replace a lock set at the park on the concession stand. And then I was up putting those little heaters in each of the restrooms in the concession, and was able to get into everything, went back to check on something in the locker at the west restroom. You couldn't get in the key just fun, so I called Haley's again out of Crawfordville, who's worked on the other, and told them what we had, and I said, "I want both handsets changed, so we don't have that problem. So we're only operating off of dead bolts on those. So you go in the restroom, you can shut the dead, or close it, and we don't have to worry about keeping both sets of locks in working condition." So they did put new handles on, new lock sets on the regular door handle, so you don't need the key to unlock the handle.
So the dead bolts won't open the door then?
The dead bolt on top, you just, yeah, which I would rather have them that way.
Better locks.
Yeah. So that was done, and I forget what, you saw the claims on that, so he came and done that. And we're in good shape now. The water's been turned off at the park, also at the meter bit, so we're ready for winter this year. I don't have anything else on new or old business, do you?
I do.
Okay.
The dog signs at the park, they still need to be put up.
The which?
The dog signs at the park.
Yeah, they still need to be...
They need to be put up yet.
Yeah.
You give them to me, I'll put them up.
Sure, yeah.
Where are they?
Over my house.
Oh, okay, I thought they knew, they moved from my office.
I was going to put U-boats around the post, and then there's a single hole in the sign. Just drill, come over and drill another one, and then put them on with those nylon insert.
So that what you want, U-boat around the post?
Yeah. You put it on the fence, it's just going to be loose, and I think we go right against the post. I've seen others had that, had them put up that way, signs of any kind.
So you want U-boat part of, and the other part, you just want to screw a hole, I mean, put a hole through it, a nylon insert to the post itself, so the screw goes in?
No, that wasn't what I was thinking. U-boat, both top and bottom on the sign.
Okay, all right, now I agree with that.
And just go around the post?
Mm-hmm.
And there is a hole already in the top of the sign, so it was made to mount with one screw. Well, I thought all we'd do, I'd have to move over like an inch or inch and a half, drill another hole, that U-boat will come through, you put those...
Well, we use a gusel holders, and we just put a carriage bolt to the post.
Yeah, I don't know, it's a pretty heavy post, that would work. That wouldn't be a problem if someone wanted to drill that post.
How many signs you got?
Four.
That's not a problem.
Have you seen them over there using it again?
So what's their count?
Have you seen them over there using it again?
Have I seen, I seen a herd of them out there today, she's sitting on the bench, and all they're running around the ball field.
I think we need to do it at those gate entrances, you know, it goes by the dugout to get in. That way you can't see it, see it.
That's where I'm going in, going into the dugout side, right there.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, I'll be happy to give it to you.
Yeah, we're getting it next week, and I'll get them up.
Okay, yeah.
And I'll see, I'll measure a post. I thought about that the other day. Well, that, and your favorite water person, let's see the dog right out there too. Seagull.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well...
And I understand why people go over and do that, they say, "They're on the fence, they dug out, watch the dogs running around the fence field, they're not getting out, not running away." I understand that, that's not what it's designed for, though.
And Rockville kind of took care of that with their dog run.
They got the dog park here.
And that's nice, but that's an expensive proposition.
Yes, it is.
And it needs maintenance after that.
Yeah.
They have to spray every so often, and things like that, and they just put a light in.
I'm saying, just put a light in for them.
Yeah, but they had to spray for fleas and anything.
But I mean, I think it's nice, but I don't know that it's...
I mean, because you've got people that probably won't clean their dog's mess up, go out some of those, so who goes in there and cleans the dog park?
I'm not sure, I think they have somebody in the utility department that kind of does upkeep on it and stuff. I did find on your drinking water thing, that the EPA has some literature they sent out on funding and technical resources for lead service line replacement in small and disadvantaged communities. But it's lengthy, so I haven't read it all. But apparently the EPA might have something that's helpful.
Yeah.
And supposedly there's some type of bipartisan infrastructure law they're passing. It's going to get $15 billion towards LS, LR, throughout the DWSRF, whatever that stands for, Department of Water and something, I would assume. I didn't send you guys this link, I haven't had a chance to read it all yet, but all you know to everybody.
Is EPA where it originally came from?
I mean, it was a spin-off of Flint, Michigan, is where it came from.
So EPA and HUD seem to be taking the lead on it from the federal level, is what it says. And apparently they sent a letter to the state governors in regards to it. There's a whole lot of information on the EPA's website. I just texted this to you, Kevin.
Thanks. Dale, anything else? New, old, darling?
I just, did we end it up, and did they do anything, like, the Airbnb, did that ever, they get an ordinance for the dogs or anything down there?
Oh, that or Farley's.
Farley's, that was, oh, that was brought up last time.
Yeah, I have not heard anything else. I know Brady was made aware of it at the meeting, and...
He has to actually catch them, is what the problem is.
Okay.
On that particular thing, we can't just take their word for it that the dogs...
They wouldn't have you ordinance to this, I mean, what you're talking about.
No, I mean, didn't say... Yeah, we just...
That's why I'm going to write them up under, but...
I haven't heard anybody complaining about it.
He'd have to actually catch them, is what he and I talked about, so...
And she had somebody there working today, so...
I noticed that today.
So, but, yeah, that, she's not being brought up at all, I mean, conversations just stuck along with them.
Did anybody see the advertisement for Washington Township as far as tax dollars? Because when I talked to Clay Neil, he was going to see about including that within that advertisement, and I don't, on their budget, and I don't know whether it was out there, and I never did see the budget.
He may not have printed it yet.
Okay.
I was going to say, because when is the print?
I was going to say, I think we print, I'm trying to think, we print them after, no, I think mine went in already.
I thought once a better got approved, it got published, if I remember right.
But see, you don't have...
You don't have to.
They say you don't have to publish them, but Mary Jo says you do.
Okay.
So I don't know.
Well, I still, I know we're going to have to do something to the concession stand building at some point, and I just want us to start thinking along those lines of the costs and what we might want to do.
That be something that our community, our Marshall Town Forever Fund could...
Yeah, it possibly could, it could be a community foundation grant, it could be money coming from the township if it was budgeted into that account, from the, from Washington Township that we could use. I just think we need to kind of clean that up. I've also been thinking about the issue of popularity of the youth association, and I've been looking for bleachers, if we could find aluminum bleachers, things that would be sufficient size, but not take an engineer to put them up. And I would like to see that, especially with your tournament coming this year, you're getting lights. I think it would enhance the park, but again, if we don't know those budgets, we won't be able to do anything with that.
Yeah.
We did, with Kevin's approval, applied for a $12,000 grant from the Park County Community Foundation to supplement the Turkeyran area Youth Association's fundraising. But we're within, if we get that grant, we're within about $2,000 or $3,000 from being able to do the lights at Marshall and at Bloomingdale.
I knew you were, that was the last meeting.
So it looks like that's probably going to happen, barring them telling us no, but we've raised half the funds for the total cost, so I think they'll probably tell us that's okay. You know, and we don't, it's not a final number, because we don't have the bid from our electrician yet, but we may have funds left. If we do, that might be something we can use to help with things too, with the foundation's blessing, obviously. But we've been able to raise about, the total cost was estimated to be about $25,000 between the two communities, and we've been able to raise almost half of that on our own, so, so I mean, that's probably going to happen, and it sounds like so.
Well, the playground equipment is now in good shape, the new slides are in, everything's done there. You put the signs up here in the near future, you've got the lights going in. We need to do something to the concession stand.
Yeah, I know, there's nothing to be excited, there's the paint, the stain, or whatever.
Yeah, I think we're very fortunate, and that is a real positive, to have a park like that in a little town. And I think as we continue to look at people remodeling and flipping homes, that's going to be a draw. You've got a park, your family's got a place to go safely play and all, and I think we've got to continue to maybe push for that.
I mean, we probably have, see, two, three... I would say we have 300 kids probably enrolled in that program, if not more.
That's great.
For the youth association, so between Bloomingdale, Turkey, and Marshall, like the Turkeyran area.
But it's been down, I mean, it's like, well, there's kids again, it's kind of, wow.
So just the Boys' AEU program had three teams and had about 12, 13 kids on the team, so that was 40 kids by itself, just at the eight-year-old level. on the team, so that was forty kids by itself, just at the eight-year-old level, and then we had, the coach pitch had two or three teams each from Bloomingdale and Marshall, um, so, I mean, now as, as they get older, kinda trickles some, but, so we don't have as larger numbers at the older level, but the younger level's stronger.
Good.
That's good.
And we do have a rainy day fund, that's about seven thousand dollars, and we haven't touched, so we do have that, and if that general comes up to talk to them, that possibility of another twenty-seven thousand.
Okay.
Coming into play too, if that all works out.
Well, I don't, I don't want us to just knee jerk, say, okay, let's buy this, let's buy that, I think we need to plan for whatever we're gonna do, but you've taken a huge step and with the lights and, and the improvements and then I think we gotta, to build on that and have a plan for it.
I did talk to the adversity baseball coach too, he had a tournament, or he had a camp that like all the kids went to, and my son went to, so I was talking to him about that and just kinda the things we were doing and things, and, um, they're buying a pitching machine that they're gonna allow the youth to use also, so we'll be able to utilize that over the winter time through the schools and stuff.
Hmm.
And so, the baseball and softball programs, pretty healthy in our community, so.
Okay.
As well as Rockville for that matter, and, so.
Yeah. Anybody else, business, Nick, what do you have for us tonight?
Um, so we have ordinances, on November fourteenth, we have two hearings, is the next time we have that, um, so I'll attend those, um, one's the next door, is the house next door, I don't remember what the other one that's set that day is, but, um, I'll attend it, I'll update you once I know what's going on with it.
That gentleman called me last week and I, in turn, talked to Brady and they were supposed to talk.
Okay.
On where they were, I mean, they.
So I'll touch base with Brady before the fourteenth then and just make sure what he wants done.
Yeah.
Uh, I have written down on my file, just as far as the raccoons and things coming into the building needs to be addressed.
Right, it is.
But I'll see what else.
What's the other one, the Amish house?
Lawhorn, maybe, I'm thinking, I don't, I'm not sure where that is, but.
It's up there by the Baptist Church.
Is that where Lawhorn is?
Well.
Well, Lawhorn owns it.
Yeah.
That's the other one, I'm pretty sure, is what I had written down, but.
So where's?
The other one is, that's the Kings you're talking about, I think.
Yeah, so where do we stand with that?
I'm not certain when it's set, I'll have to look, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but last time we had anything on it, I, I think service on them was an issue, so, but, I don't know, I, I'll have to look at that file to know.
Okay.
But those are the next two, they're on my radar for the fourteenth, uh, which is coming up, um, I wrote down to look into ordinances as far as campers in town and as far as connecting to neighboring properties, is that something you want me to look into and just see what there is out there on that?
You know, it, it's too bad, it's such an isolated incident, but I could see an issue with connecting, if you're a water customer and then you just allow people to hook on, I don't think that's the intent of a water system.
Right.
I mean, you gotta pay your fair share for.
I mean, they're, they're not profiting, I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, they're, they're paying for the use of the water, but they're not paying for the lines and the meters and the.
But that person that's ended up and letting you hook, how do you know he's not charging that other person an extra dollar?
Right, and that's why I say, I mean, if you guys are okay with that, I'll look into and just kinda see, I'm certain this isn't the first time that's occurred somewhere, so, um, we probably don't have to recreate the wheel there, we can see what they've done.
I mean, a temporary thing is one thing, you know, it's a permanent.
Yeah, and that's not what it's meant to be.
Yeah.
Um, and then the other thing we talked about was ingress, egress, easement by the ball fields or things like that, so I'm gonna look into that too, I haven't done that yet.
Okay.
So, those are the things I had on my radar, um, the youth association is meeting in the next couple of weeks, um, so, uh, we may have more information on things at that point, but we're supposed to meet in the next two weeks or so, so.
What'd you do with that, that check that you was gonna sign over, then you wanted me to deposit, do you still have it?
Well, I need our president to sign it so I can bring it to you, and I just haven't seen her.
Okay.
I actually have several checks.
Okay.
Um, but we also applied to the foundation, so that check's kind of the big check that will need addressed, but, um, I just finished that application last week, so they haven't had time to look at it or anything, but it, you know, sounds encouraging, just having talked to Brad Baumgartner, so, um, but yeah, those are things, so when we have our meeting, I'll be able to have our president sign those and then I'll bring them to you and, um, but that's kinda where we're at on it, so, um, we were looking at maybe putting more lime on the fields too before the ball season, um, getting in and out of the field with something to be able to till it or things like, that's a problem though, so I'm not sure how we're gonna do that, cause the entrances aren't big enough where you can take farm equipment in really, um, but.
I noticed they don't have a gate or tractor go in there?
Well, there's a couple of gates.
You have to have.
A small.
It's gonna have to be something fairly small, Roy Reitzman was kinda looking at how that would work, uh, the good thing is we have a lot of farmers involved in our youth association, so between all of them, hopefully.
Yeah.
Cause like Phil Woods, Brad Crickcraft, Roy Reitzman, all those guys are involved, so, um, so that's something else we are looking at, possibly putting more lime down on the two fields, or new bases also, because some of the bases got tore up, so, um, so.
I think you mentioned the benches and things in the dugouts.
Yeah.
They're gonna need a little bit of.
Some TLC, paint job, and you know, the, the bigger field more so than the smaller field, I think the smaller field seems to be in better shape, but, um, yeah, those are things that to the eye would look better, I think, um, we did talk about looking at a, a scoreboard, but anymore, a lot of them are doing them through an app and things like that, so I don't know if we'll pursue that or not, the travel ball teams have some kind of app where you can just get the app and you can see what the score is, and they update it on their phones, so, that's something we're talking about still though, Bloomingdale has a scoreboard and we have something on the small field, I think, but the big field doesn't have anything, I don't think, but I've never used anything on either field, so.
She'd have to have a decent sales service for that to work now.
Yeah, so I, those are things that we're talking about though, um, there's an endless supply of ways you can spend money, so.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, um, but yeah, I, I think Kings need, they either have a hearing date or they need a new hearing date, one of the two, I'll look into that, I'm, I'm not sure, and then Rex Franklin was the other one that I need to look at and see where we're at on that, and talk to Brady about those two.
And then we'll talk to Brady about the other one down here?
Well, I had conversation about it.
Brady did, okay.
And he was done, he had done some checking, I think they've communicated.
We've talked some.
About whether or not you could have a trailer and limit a trailer.
I'm talking about like, I mean, there's a fence that he's.
Yeah.
At this point, I'm.
I mean, I guess you just start making a list and then see where, what you've got to.
So I look at it when I drove by and I, I mean, I'll leave it up to Brady, but I felt like we might be able to hit him with a nuisance violation, because there's a lot of junk there, so, I mean, but that's up to Brady, his discretion, it's not.
But if you're hitting, you're hitting the property owner now.
Right, but they own the property, they're responsible.
They're responsible.
You know?
I understand.
But that's the only way that, I mean, if they're gonna have to cut this.
We had the same problem with the Franklin property.
Right.
I mean, who owns it, it's a person that's deceased and you.
Well, that's an estate, and this one's lives of people.
Yeah.
The Franklin one, the Franklin one's an estate, I mean, I'm not, there's nothing I can do to, there's no, any, they didn't open this day, I mean, we could open this state, but then we're responsible for the property, so, and I don't think you wanna be responsible for the property necessarily as a town, but, cause that, that'd be an endless amount of funds to clean that place up, but, yeah, right now, I, I don't have a good solution on that property, um, but these other ones, especially this one down here, because I already talked to one of the owners and told her about the trailer needing moved, and it was moved within forty-eight hours, so, I mean, albeit it was a heated conversation, but.
But I was saying, um, because don't we have an ordinance that if you build something, I mean, aren't you supposed to get a permit to do it?
I don't.
For the building, yeah.
We did pass that, I don't remember what the teeth in it were though, as far as what we can do, fine wise.
I mean, I'm just saying, is that just another?
They say another one, yeah.
Add to it.
I think the nuisance ordinance, uh, is probably the most valuable to us.
Twenty-five hundred dollars a day is.
It's detrimental to surrounding property values.
Oh, a hundred percent, there's no question.
Well, I mean, this, tonight wasn't our first person that complained about it, we had last week, last month too.
Right.
Another neighbor, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, and everybody likes to say, well, there's this place in town or that place in town, but that's not an excuse for your property, I mean, we're trying to get all of the properties to be in a good spot, and that's what I hear a lot, is just, well, so and so's property is worse than my property.
Hmm.
That's just not a solution to the problem, so.
Right.
But yeah, I mean, it would be the property owner, it wouldn't be who's living on the property, so, but, um, my opinion is, I think it violates that ordinance.
Well, I agree.
We can't condemn a piece of property.
That's a lot, it's like a year and a half process, this is a lot shorter process if we cite them with the nuisance and we hit them with a fine, um, because in order to foreclose on, on, you know, on a property, you have to get to half the property's value, and with there not being a building structure on that property, it wouldn't take very long to incur fines there to half the property's value. And Judge Swain from the bench for a county case we had, told the property owner, I said, look, you know, you have almost fifteen thousand dollars in fines on your property, they're not far from being able to foreclose and have a sold-out a share or sale, and so then they cleaned up the property, and that's kinda the situation down the street really, with the house already being gone, city lot's not worth what a lot with a house on it's worth.
Right.
So, so I'd like to have me to look at, if Brady thinks he can write it up, open to that ordinance. Ultimately, it's his discretion on whether he thinks it's a violation or not, not mine, so.
Yeah, I have talked to him a number of times about it, and just looking into options there, so.
I mean, worst the judge could do is say, no, it doesn't need it, dismiss our case.
Yeah.
But I think it does. At least at this point it does, and maybe not back right afterwards.
Well, because it's, it's like, it's a con, here's another thing, here's another, I mean, it was like, we only started with one trailer there, we've got three now.
Well, then he's got two trailers with junk on them.
We put a fence down, I mean.
It's just gonna continue. Those trailers aren't blocking the sidewalk right now.
No, they moved it off and everything, but.
I thought they did.
Still, it's town.
It's full of junk and it's.
It's full of junk and it's in town.
Because that one was sitting there when I did the water meters, and that was what, last Thursday?
Yeah.
So that means it hasn't moved.
I mean, I had beaty two of them for the town of Rockville that were processing, so, so I mean, Turkey Run, or the Marshall communities comparatively, you know, and we have maybe, what, six we're working on, so.
Yeah.
A lot of those Rockville ones have got cleaned up, the other chief of police over there's done a good job of it, so.
That's good.
Okay, I'll follow up again with Brady.
That's the ordinance we have on the books that has the most teeth, so, I'm not saying there's not other ordinances we could adopt, but that's the one we currently have.
Yeah, well, that's against your big bang.
Yeah, cause the, the one for the fence, I mean, at most I bet that says a hundred dollar fine, I, I can't imagine it being more than that fine wise.
Well, there's a, a fee just to pay for the.
Right.
That too, so I mean.
Yeah, I mean, if you're writing up, I, you know, write them up for every ordinance that.
And then that way, the judge will end up and say, okay, he's been consistent.
Right.
They're consistent.
This one, I think if we show the judge a picture of the property, that, I mean, here's exhibit A, we rest, you know?
Which I guess those two buildings beside the camper would be classified too as a permit violation, cause he brought those in, that'd be like bringing in, that would be different than bringing in your little buildings that they're bringing in, cause he's using them for.
Residence, well.
He's using them for the dogs.
But that was a, that was a violation of our, our nuisance ordinance there, yeah.
Usually on the first violation, he'll fine them twenty-five hundred dollars and tell them to clean the property up, but if they continue to violate, it escalates to seventy-five hundred dollars, so, uh, at least that's been my experience with it so far.
But I think some of the kids are living in the other, one of the other trailers now, I think two of them, a little boy, I think.
Well, and if they're not hooked to septic and they're pumping the sewage out, that's something the health department could look at.
You see those kids there?
His girlfriend's kids are there part-time, I guess.
I, I didn't know that.
I don't.
It was what I was.
Never heard that.
Minor kids, minors?
I don't know how old they are now, time has gotten away from me, so I'm not sure.
But, I mean.
Okay.
He hasn't shown a willingness to be cooperative so far, so.
No.
We're just cutting that tree down and it fell on the neighbors, it was, they're not.
Okay, Tom, are you thinking of?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Kathy?
Um, I already gave this, do you need this copy?
No.
Okay, I already gave it to Tom, so he gets stuff done, our readings are pretty good, cause we got a little small leak, um, nothing major, or hadn't anything major, so not bad there, nothing outstanding when I did the meter readings, so.
You don't need it, which I want to?
No, that, that was a little dry, cause I have one of mine, I just had that copy for Tom and that's my monthly adjustment, just like that, initial it, that I did have done, I had one shut off this month, I did that day.
I talked to Jason today about this meter change right down here, Tom's.
Oh, Tom's.
He couldn't find the meter pit, and then he talked to Andy and Andy told him where the meter pit was.
Yeah, he told me, sent a text to him later.
So he was, yeah, he's gonna take care of that right away. And, and am I correct, the only meter that's inaccessible is down, um.
Sharon Hill.
At Sharon Hill.
As far as I'm aware of.
Yeah, and we need to decide when we wanna tackle that problem, her, her meter is in the basement, her basement.
Who's that?
Sharon Hill, and, I mean, there were several early on and we've, we're down to that one.
Yeah, mine is red in the basement, I took it out.
Yeah.
Tom Graves was in the basement, wasn't he?
His was in the basement, the corner store, the restaurant was in the, I mean, we had several of them at one time.
Did we get those two, the main buildings here moved out, so they're not in the basement anymore?
No, no, we've got a new meter pit in the alley, yeah, so I think that's something we need to do, I just, I'm always reluctant to spend that money, you gotta, it works and where we're getting the meter red.
And plus we're starting to get it in the network, so it's like.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
So we're reading her meter now?
Well, she's reading it.
I mean, you're remotely reading her meter now? Now, give me the right answer, I wanna know the right answer, is that meter able to be read remotely? Okay, I'm driving or something here, you don't wanna spend the money digging up outside and put a meter outside, a meter pit lost, why could we not put a meter in her basement that could be read remotely?
Well.
That's why I'm driving.
There is a meter in there, but we just can't get access to it.
I know, those meter.
But we need to put it outside, so that it could be turned off if we need to.
I understand that too, but Kevin's throwing a figure out, I mean, the fact I hear, you don't necessarily wanna spend the money to put a meter pit and everything else.
That is temper.
Well, and I say that because of the condition the water department had been in before the rate increase.
Mm-hmm.
And we're, we're now approaching the time that's more comfortable to do that.
We have one.
I don't say that I don't wanna spend the money, it, we haven't had a situation where we needed to, to necessarily do it, it wasn't a bad meter down there, we couldn't get to, it wasn't a leak, that we couldn't shut off, I mean, it wasn't any of those things, uh, but I think the time is, is coming where we're, we're gonna need to just do it, just by the.
Before, I would, I mean, I would love to have that down there, but there's another house in town that needs to have one done before we do that one.
Those are from me, so, I sent you a quote on bleachers.
That I've been pushing off because saving the money, that it's. That I've been pushing off because saving the money, that it's all full of dog mud and it's caved in and.
Yeah, I know which one you're talking about.
Yeah. So that one needs to be done and Ronnie to put it on the back burner, I know he's forgot about it now. Now that I do have somebody, I need, I was thinking that I need to push him to get that down or give me a quote on it, on what it's going to cost.
Well, they're just going to have to dig it up, back it out, dig it up.
But if here putting one in is a cheaper, just go ahead and do the other at the same time?
Probably not, because.
Yeah, I don't think that it would just be done quicker because then you're not waiting on him to come back. Because I, so it's a meter, I mean, because that meter doesn't, the meter in the basement doesn't have the electronic thing on it so you can read it electronically. And you can't do it sitting outside of the house.
It's not reading.
It's not reading at all now, okay?
Well, it hasn't the last couple of times.
Which is the problem we've had. We've had meters in long enough that we have.
That's what we're just like.
Right.
It's a type of water damage to be.
So it sounds like we're going to have to look and see if we've got money to do it.
Yeah, it's an expensive proposition and I want the water department to get healthy before we buy it off something we don't really have to do right now. I understand the other side of that is, well, if you wait too long, then you'll wish you had. But yeah, I'd rather wait till spring to do that.
So do those meters have a battery of some sort built into them, ones that you mean?
No, the water going through the meter keeps the battery charged.
Oh, good.
Yeah. And they're good for how many years are they?
Some of them have been in the original.
15 or 20.
15 years, yeah. Which hers is one of the original ones that's in the basement, so.
Sure, sure, yeah.
I mean, if there's a leak there, she's going to have to find out real fast, but.
Right, yeah.
Nick, what are we looking at doing, a tampering with the meter ordinance too? Because we had that one that somebody got in and turned it on.
Oh, yeah.
And we have a fee for that on our thing. Which I found this one, the Fort Branch, Indiana, it was brought up in one of my emails. I don't know if you want to do something like this, $200 amounts to match up?
Yeah, that's a good support. We have locks on it?
Yeah, that one I filled one on after he got in there. Yeah, just enough of the $200 amounts, I don't think.
Yeah, that's fine. Maybe something will work off of it anyway.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we did have padlocks on all of them, that nobody could get in them on their own.
Well, yes and no.
Yeah.
Just take the riser and place it off and then you're in. There's always a way.
And we do have, I mean, Karen doesn't control the money that's in that foundation money. Her money is pretty well spent, but we had about $1,000 this.
There's supposed to be availability of dollars each year.
We have a committee. It's not just Karen.
Right, but I mean, she had that money that she said she did for the arch.
Yeah.
But we had money in there before that was given to us from them that she doesn't really.
Right, and then she has amounts to utilize every year too.
So, but yeah, so we do have, what was it, $1,000?
So did, because Karen, I meant to text Janice and ask her, did she give, okay, she gave that to you then? Because I told her to make sure you give it to you and then Karen needed a copy so that way she can keep track of what money she's spent, where she's at. That doesn't, I don't know, see, that doesn't make any sense because she hasn't, that has nothing to do with her. That was money from before that we had set up there for flowers and stuff. So that hasn't, I don't know where she's, why she thinks she's got her thumb on that. She has no say so.
Unless it's a foundation, is she supposed to keep track of the foundation?
So the forever funds in the different communities have their own committee that's in charge of. They receive the initial funds and then those funds grow and they're in charge of dispersing the money and things like that. But if you had a fund with the foundation, the foundation would still have that fund.
But see, she did, she had to keep track of all that money when she was doing the arch. This was money from before.
Wasn't even part of her.
That wasn't part of any of that.
Because is that money all from the arch part gone then?
It's pretty, I think it's pretty well done.
Unless that's what she was thinking, that this, what we, when we did, how we decorate, that that goes against, I don't know.
I don't know much about the local forever fund community stuff. I mean, I'm on the board at the foundation, but we don't really, I mean, Brad Bumgarner, Colleen, would, no answers to that.
Because when I got that money before, I didn't have to do anything like what she's doing now or what she was doing before with the archman.
Okay, because I thought I still, because she asked me, I haven't turned anything in because from the summer, I saw my flowers. I just gave her receipts.
But there is funding each year out of that forever fund. Yes, but they have to meet as a committee to give a rubber stamp.
And then Brad at the foundation, for anything up to $1,000, has authority to grant it on his own. And then they have a committee for grants and then if it's over $5,000, then the board itself has to vote. Which I'm not, I refused on anything with the lights and stuff. I can't do anything with it, but.
Yeah, because of the amount of money that she had got for the arch, had to go a different route. And I understand she had to keep track of all of that.
Right.
But yeah.
I wonder if that's where she was, maybe had some extra there that she needed.
Her numbers and mine don't jive and I send her my papers and send her my papers and.
Unless she's taking it, thinking.
That's not a bad price.
Well, and they're real similar.
Because I just had to review my receipts.
I'd be curious as to what, why he charged the Dilger Wood one, because I redid our.
We're to the point now that she has no.
The term is, we're spending
She thinks she does, but she doesn't.
$200, $400 a year on those.
And I think Jason was watering out there and.
We might be better off.
What I sent you is what we have over at Bloomingdale.
I don't know why, one day she called in, "Boring," to get up here.
I didn't think that's a bad price.
Right.
I mean, there's, I mean, there's bigger ones and there's smaller ones, but that's a three-row set and that's.
Well, I think if you get over three rows and then you have to have ends and back on it, that's the way it was up school.
Yep.
So you really.
That's what it looked like online too, and then it's like $3,000 or $4,000 and.
Yes.
But that's off the Amazon, so I mean, there might be somewhere has a better price than Amazon.
Yeah, I was even looking for used.
Yeah.
Bleachers, and you do find them, but some of them are pretty good sized sets.
Well, and it might be a conversation for the schools too, because I don't know what they're using bleacher wise or not for like middle school and stuff like that, or if they have ones they're looking to get rid of, or.
The school out here had like a three or four one for softball at one time.
Yeah.
And didn't have any sliter.
They're still playing the middle school softball over there.
I thought they were.
But I don't know where they're playing the middle school baseball. Sim on the set over there also.
It was last year.
Or football, I think the middle school football's there too. So they may not have anything, but.
Anything else, Kathy? Anybody else have anything for the meeting? Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.